Order, this is a Redmond City Council Study Session held on Tuesday, January 14th, 2025, commencing at 7:00 PM. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Fields, Councilmember Nueva Camina, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Salahudin, Councilmember Anderson, and online we have Councilmember Stewart and myself, Council President Kritzer, and we also have our Mayor, Mayor Angela Burney here in attendance. There are three items on our agenda tonight, the 2024 Q4 Capital Investment Program Status Update and a look ahead to 2025, council retreat planning, and council talk time. The first item on the agenda is the 2024 Q4 Capital Investment Program Status Update and a look ahead to 2025. Vanji Garcia, our Deputy Public Works Director, will introduce this item. Go ahead, Ms. Garcia.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. This is the first of our regular recurring meetings with you presenting the status of the CIP. I'm here with Steve Gibbs and Tess Wilkinson from our Capital Project Division. The next time you will see us is in April.
Good evening, Council. Steve Gibbs, Capital Construction. I'm here with Tess Wilkinson, our CIP project planner. We're gonna take a look at the wrap-up on 2024 and then the kind of the early work plan for 2025. And so, with no further ado, let's march through the deck.
This is how we've ended up the 2023-2024 by anym. Our goal in 2024 was to complete eight of the CIP projects. We ended up completing six of them. The EV charging stations project, along with the 10,000 block of Avondale, got pushed into the early part of this year. We expect the EV charging stations to be completed this month, and the 10,000 block of Avondale project will wrap up in February. So as requested, there is a list of recently completed and soon-to-be-completed projects here. Included in here is for ones that are still underway, roughly where we are project completion-wise, along with the budget and the expected cost to finish the project. Are there any questions on this? You're very welcome. Now we'll move into our project and program reports. Oh, sorry.
There's one question. Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. Just real quick, the EV charging station, are those the ones located here on the City Hall campus, and are they publicly available?
They are, yes, they are in the parking garage, and no, they are not publicly available. They are for our growing EV fleet.
Awesome. Thank you.
This is our scope and status indicators. I think everybody's pretty familiar with what these are. And then we're moving into our general government program report. This month, we've received our audit report back for our public safety building project, as well as the sustainability projects. This is gonna move those projects out of pre-design and into design work. And then upcoming general government projects in 2025 is gonna be EV charging stations Phase Two, along with the facilities' small capital repairs. That project's gonna be run by our facilities department. Then our featured projects tonight are the EV charging stations, as well as PPE management.
Okay, so on the EV charging, we were asked last time to give you an update on this. As you've probably observed, the station or the charging stations themselves have been in place for a while, and what we're finding is that the, basically, the internet connectivity of the stations back to the vendor, they're having some issues with that. They're shipping out an additional modem to get additional coverage, to get the last couple stations up and running. Right now, we've got about 12 stations that are, they're able to use. So some of the fleet vehicles have already been charging overnight, some of the inspection vehicles, construction inspection, building inspection, that, those type, fire fleet. So once that final modem or gateway gets installed, and then that's, those last couple stations will come up online, I mean, just by the end of the month for that to happen. So it's been a little, kind of a prolonged thing. It's kind of funny, we ordered the chart, the actual charging stations about three years ago, so that we could get this online sooner, and then the switchgear kind of hit us in the gut, and we've been waiting for this switchgear for over a year. So we're glad to get this thing finally wrapped up and able for folks to use. Questions?
Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thanks for that reminder. I remember that now that you say it. So that was good, good refresher. Just thinking, resiliency-wise, is this something that we need to be considering in the future, maybe solar panels on the garage to help charge these so during our next big windstorm, we still have access to the fleet? You know, when, when windstorm happened, I saw a lot of people commenting on how they were glad they didn't have an EV, but I'm like, you know, if you can't get gas from the gas pump, because there's no electricity, of the same problem. So what's our resiliency plan?
So it's a great question. We're gonna look at that in the Phase Two. So if you recall, we upsized the transformer so that it could handle not only the 20s in the lower level, but when we add the three other floors and get a total of 80, that transformer can handle that. But we will look into the possibility of having some resiliency in solar power as a backup, or maybe additional source of power.
Awesome. Thanks.
Any other questions at this point? All right, continue.
So the PP management was added to the CIP, what was that, about a year ago? And it's four stations, and this really came out of COVID, as the crews went out into the field, they were struggling to get their gear cleaned and dried before their next shift, and so they started doing some research on this. And so there's two, two components to this, improved ventilation, so that the drying room can dry the equipment faster, and then the extractors is kind of an industrial washer that will kind of give it a deep clean and expedite that drying process. So in any TI, it's challenging. Older stations, it's always fun to open up the floor and see what's in there, and trying to weave some of the plumbing and the electrical through. So we're right in that phase right now. We're about, I would say, we're about 50% complete, and it'll be really tight on the budget, but we're hoping we can come in close to budget on this.
Not seeing any questions. You can keep going.
I'll remember eventually. This is our Parks Program Report, and last month, we wrapped up construction on the grass lawn parking lot repairs, and we continue to make progress on the sports court replacement projects, as well as our turf replacement projects. And this quarter, we are featuring those turf replacement projects. Our upcoming Parks Projects in 2025, we have quite a few of these. There are the landscape right-of-way conversions, and if you're not familiar with that one, they will be taking some of the higher-maintenance landscape right-of-ways and putting in low-maintenance, low-water sustainability plantings in there. We're also, we'll kick off the urban tree, urban forestry tree planting program, as well as the tree maintenance program. There, it will be the permanent dog park installation, and then the Idlewood Park parking lot expansion and frontage improvements, which will be run by the, our Capital Division.
Can you remind us of the details on the urban forestry tree planting program, what that's gonna look like?
I don't have the details in front of me on that one, but I can certainly send those to you.
Great, thanks.
Okay, so our featured project is the turf replacements. This is at Grass Lawn and up at Hartman, Fields Five and Six. Mostly, it's the infills that gets the high wear. Usually, we get about 10 years of use out of those. I believe that we're gonna try two different infills. If you remember, a few years back, the crumb rubber, we were finding some, I would say, not appropriate runoff coming out of that due to some of the, the stuff with the tires. And so we tried a cork at Perrigo, and we liked the, how that performed when it was under use in the field. Some of the issues we found, though, on like a heavy rain, the cork would float, and then they would have to go in and kind of re-rake it in, so it's a little bit more high-maintenance. So we're gonna do one cork, and then we're gonna try, it's an encapsulated polyethylene plastic, and it's supposed to be inert, with no issues with runoff, and so that'll be the other infill choice when we do that. These projects are under the shared procurement. We have a couple of options once we get to that point. We're currently about, I would say, 75% designed, where they're mainly adding striping plans so that we can send to the contractor for pricing.
Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, it feels like we talked about this once before, and I'm not an expert about this, but I know that there's some turfs that emit fairly dangerous fumes for people who are using the field. Are we cognizant of all those options, and are we steering clear of anything that's...
I think Parks is, was, is on top of this, and we are considering that in our selection. I can get back to you on some of the specifics that we're looking at from the vendors.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. I know, just in the work I do on Pirine, I can tell the difference.
Smell it?
Yeah, especially on a 100-degree day. So, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, and I do recall, I think, the Parks Director, last year, at some point, we had gotten a constituent question about that, and mentioning that we were gonna look for good materials, so, but we can, it'd be good to get the answer on that. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd also be very interested to know, you know, about the, the materials, you know, with the, because of the area that it's in, Redmond's groundwater, what, what are we, we looking at that for years on down, since the lifespan's about 10 years? Thank you.
Councilmember Salahudin?
Thank you, and it's good to know that the question was asked about, you know, resident sentiment around, you know, what the playing field would, would be like. Have we talked to kids, or have we talked to families about the playability of different turfs? Because just having played on turf, I will, I don't love the cork, and there's just differences in how the, the playing occurs, and so getting user feedback on that, I think, along with, you know, what both Councilmember Fields and Councilmember Nueva Camina brought up, just the totality of what turf is being used, I think it's critical as we make a decision for 10 years, if not longer.
I do know that at Perrigo, we added a shock pad, if you will, and they're looking at Gmax levels that can, how much, you know, impact that, that pad can absorb, was a big discussion during the design of that project. So we can, I can go back to Parks, and we'll see if they've come up with anything new, but, but that's kind of what, with the cork, it's not as, doesn't absorb the impact as well as the crumb rubber did, and so because of that, we added that shock pad. So did you play out at Perrigo?
Yeah, yeah. I played at Perrigo.
Okay, so we need a thicker pad?
Yeah, yeah, a thicker pad would be great, but, no, it's good to know that that, I mean, that science is being used in enhancing the playability, but, yeah, just looking at, even the second question that I had, you mentioned one will be one type of turf, and you said one will be one type, another will be another type. Is that grass lawn versus Hartman, or one field at grass lawn versus another field?
I think we're gonna do, Hartman will have one type, and
Got it.
And grass lawn will have another.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sorry, Hartman and Perrigo. No, wait, wait.
It's grass lawn. Yeah, it's grass lawn. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's field one at grass lawn.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
All right, I'm not seeing any other questions. Why don't you continue?
Our Traffic Operations Program Report. In addition to managing paving projects, which it does sometimes seem that that's all that they do, our Traffic Operations Group also oversees a number of safety improvement projects, and next year is no different than that. In 2025, that group will oversee the pedestrian safety signs for signals. Those are those no-turn-on red signs that we see. They will also be upgrading the accessibility pedestrian, those little push-button signs on those. About 10 intersections will receive new ones. And then the pedestrian safety improvements at various slip lanes. These are crosswalk markings, curb paintings, things like that, just to improve pedestrian safety on the, the free right-hand turn lanes. Our Capital Group will be managing the pedestrian and bicycle safety projects. These are taking place at three locations within the city, at 164th Avenue, East Lake Sammamish Parkway, and on 104th Street. We'll also be kicking off the ADA improvements, the transportation curb ramps project, once again. And then this quarter, we will be featuring the Avondale Road paving.
Okay, I love the title on this project, because it's, it's, it's basically a major utility pipe replacement with an overlay, but it, but we've called it a paving project. So the, it's a significant amount of waterline replacement. This is part of the AC waterline replacement, and we're gonna do that ahead of the overlay. There's not gonna be any really need for system expansion, it's like, like bigger pipes or anything, it's strictly an AC replacement, and the, the existing water main will remain live while we're constructing the new system, so it is a little tricky as far as construction, but it's the best way to keep the residents in service while we're doing the waterline construction, and then there will be a kind of a staged, just deactivate the AC line and then bring the ductile iron line on, to serve the residents. And then after all that work is done, then we'll be doing the overlay project. The overlay is a little complicated, because the old road underneath is the concrete pavement, the 22 feet wide, eight inches thick, that was put, you know, probably in the 50s, and that kind of meanders underneath the existing Avondale alignment, so it's a challenge sometimes when we're digging, or when we're doing an overlay.
Yep, go ahead, Mayor.
Thanks, and this is part of our legislative ask for some money from the state to help us with the AC pipe replacement, and also, we will make sure we're messaging our community quite well when we start in on this, because it will be, I'm sure, a topic of conversation.
Oh, before, note is that you'll be seeing the memo for the design contract pretty soon.
And then the, also, there's a buffered bike lane that's worked into the scope as well.
Buffered bike lane. I wonder if Council Vice President Forsyth has a comment on that. Go ahead.
You had me at buffered bike lane. No, I was actually gonna comment on the communication plan, to make sure that folks know not just what's going on, but why, because I think that AC, if we explain that part, we might get a bit less frustrated community members in explaining that, you know, this is, you won't have a water system if we don't do this now. So I think that plan is really important, and if you could just let us know when those communications are gonna go out, so that we can actually help share them out as well.
Absolutely, and it is a lengthy design process, and so we'll have plenty of opportunities to message out to the community, keep our website, project website updated, and pushing the folks to that for the latest information.
Councilmember Salahudin?
Yeah, and specifically on that communications plan, with the targeted completion being September 27, is that one where, is this a project where we feel comfortable and confident without knowing what could happen, just in terms of external circumstances, but keeping to that timeline?
I feel confident on this one. We don't need a permit from King County on this.
I'm not seeing other hands, so why don't you keep going?
He's a hard act to follow. Our Transportation Planning Report. This year, we expect to complete the Northeast 40th Sidewalk Repairs, as well as sidewalk repairs on 166th and Avondale Way. I did find a missed update from me on here. The Bell Ride buffered bike lanes are in design, and we expect to advertise that project this spring and begin construction in the summer. Upcoming transportation planning projects in 2025 are a couple of CFD-related projects. These are the 150th Avenue Improvements and the Overlake Accessibility Improvements.
I'll just jump in for a second to say, I'm really excited about this list. I think this year, we're gonna see, we've been kind of building all of these different pieces, especially for our cycling, and we're just gonna see so much of it come together into fruition in 2025, so just wanted to jump in to share a little excitement there. Continue.
And then, as requested, this quarter, our featured project, to give you a little bit more information on, is the Northeast 70th Street Shared Use Path.
So if you recall, we attempted to connect the roadway along with the bike path and the pedestrian sidewalk. We were having trouble with the property owner, and so we kind of diverted to the shared use path only. We're working with a consultant. We should have a plan and profile for that path in here shortly, and then we just received the easement from Kroger, and so we really don't have any restrictions on moving forward. The concrete crew is ready and able to construct the pathway once we kind of get that plan and profile. And then, as it shows up on the slide, and then, and then later this year, we will be working on the crossing of Redmond Way, and then some of the signal and pedestrian, there's a couple of ramps that we need to adjust, and then some signal, minor signal work, and that will come in after we get the pathway in.
I'll add that this is one of those projects that really extends our bike ped network, that missing gap between 180th and Redmond Way to get to the station.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thanks. The, you mentioned the Kroger easement. Is that in addition to the one that kind of hung up this project?
No, that was on the other side.
Oh, that's on the other side?
Yeah, so this is, this was necessary for the ultimate project as well, and so we kept the, the pathway in that alignment, so it doesn't preclude from us doing the roadway work in the future.
Cool. Thanks.
Go ahead.
All right, our Utilities Program, this is one of our larger programs, has it covers stormwater, water, and wastewater projects. In 2025, we have a number of utility projects starting up. There will be the variable frequency drive replacements at our lift stations number two and three. At High School Creek, we'll be placing enlarged, woody debris. We'll continue our control and telemetry projects, starting Phase Number Four, and then connection to King County, the wastewater system. We'll also be working on the AC water main replacements. This is Phase One, taking place in the Viewpoint North neighborhood, as well as for stormwater, working on corrugated metal pipe replacements. It's going to be a very active utility season, and our featured project in this program, again as requested, is Evans Creek.
Yeah, and I'd love to get this one going this year. It's gonna be real tight on whether we can hit our, our construction windows. We're still waiting on that permit from the other agency. The, the, and then the last time we were before you, I think we were doing the property discussion, and there was some current concern about that. We did, right after that meeting, we got in contact with both of the property owners that have kind of been silent for a while, so we are negotiating, continuing to negotiate. It was a little slow, the second half of December, which, you know, everybody was out of town or whatever, and so not much happened then, but we, we are continuing negotiations, and so hopefully we can come to a resolution there, and then, but really, the, the big schedule thing is this, this permit. Project Manager has reached out multiple times to the county, and we finally had Director Burt call one of his buddies over there to see if we could get some, you know, some response, and we did get a meeting set up for this Thursday with the county, and so hopefully we can address their concerns and get the rights necessary to construction project this year, but the time is, the clock is ticking, and so very concerned about getting this started this year. So that's why it's red.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. Two questions. The fastest answered one is probably, the target date, I believe it was October 2026, is that target date with the unknown contingencies factored into that the best that we can? And I understand we don't have a crystal ball in knowing whether, when we're going to get that permit from that particular agency.
So if I understand your question, if, if we hit, if we hit construction this summer, then our, our estimate should be good, and our contingency should be adequate. If we don't, then basically, it's another year of escalation, so I'm concerned both, you know, obviously, schedule-wise and budget-wise.
And my second question was, what, what is the consequence slash cost of us having another delay, and having to go to next year's construction?
Well, it's, 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 one, we don't have the benefit, and then, and two, it's the escalation. Those are huge, huge concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you. And actually, I will ask a question. I mean, it sounds like we, we have done all of our connections here with the county, but is there anything that, that we might be able to support as council members, or I mentioned, our mayor is also pitching in on this in terms of, I was actually thinking about RIAA8, like whether there's, since the county runs that, and this is a funded project by, by them as well, you know? Go ahead.
Yeah, normally, normally what we do is an escalation, so if Director Burt has already reached out to his contacts, we'll, we'll see, you know, any of a meeting coming up, so we'll see where that goes, but then the next step would be, then they would talk to me, and I would talk to the executive and see if, what, what needs to be unleashed there. So usually, that's the typical path, but hopefully, we won't need to do that, and they will unleash the permits.
It did start conversations going, so the key, because a permit is, is when the construction window is, because once it's gone, it's, we passed it, but hopefully, we'll, we're on the way to getting the right people in the same meeting to move this forward. I think that's what we've been struggling for a while, to get responses, so we got a response once we, we reached out recently.
Interesting. And I will actually note that I think on the RIAA8 legislative agenda for this, this session, is actually supporting a bill that would help with expediting some of the permitting for salmon recovery restoration types of projects, so this might be a good example to be able to share. They're trying to pilot some ways, especially on projects, I think, like these and others, to be able to just like help with, with the permitting process, which can be such an impediment. So, anyway, appreciate you keeping at it. Councilmember Fields?
On that topic, I'm a little bit lost or maybe confused. Is it because they're not answering the phone, or because we know what the issues are and we have disagreements?
No, they, they're, they're not responding.
So we don't even...
I mean, I have a list of the contacts, it's, it's like obnoxious, and, and so finally, after Director Burt reached out, we, we finally got somebody to respond.
So we don't even know what they may be concerned about yet?
No.
That's crazy.
We're on our way. I just want to point out that we got some movement here, so...
Well, thank you for your dedication, and I know we're all really excited about this project, so hopefully, we can get some movement on it this year. Feel free to continue.
All right, and as requested, this is a list of our pedestrian bicycle safety projects, both underway... underway and those that are upcoming. Give you a moment to look at this, and is there any questions? Good to go. All right. This is a look at the milestones that we expect to hit in the upcoming quarter. We've got, we are starting work on quite a number of projects, and then we will have a very busy advertising season this winter rolling into spring. And as mentioned earlier, these are the projects that we expect to complete, the 10,000 Block of Avondale in here, the electric vehicle charging station, as well as our control and telemetry Phases Two and Three. And as a heads up, these are the projects that we expect to come before you fairly soon for construction acceptance, pending the receipt of all of the necessary paperwork. That's usually what our holdup is, getting that paperwork. And that's what I had. Any questions?
There are other questions from the council. We kind of peppered them in throughout the presentation, but we'll, oh, and I think we have one online from our online council member, Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the staff. My colleagues did a great job thoroughly with the questions. I just wanted to recognize you all for bringing this format of presentation back. It's very clear, just from seeing it once again, that it is the right format. It is what fits. And over time, it helps to socialize the stories behind these projects. I think a few of my colleagues pointed that out in their comments earlier tonight. So thank you all so much for your work on this. Really appreciate it, and look forward to hearing from you again in the spring.
Other questions from the council? Councilmember Fields?
Are we in a position to update the bicycle mapping?
Could you clarify that question?
Let's say I wanted to see where all the bike paths, safety lanes were. Would I be able to look at a City of Redmond map and see what is current and what is?
In just our current CIP or propose, like, our future vision?
Both.
That is actually part of the transportation master plan, and it's a chapter that TPNE is in charge of. But there is a current map and web map, and we can send the link out to you if it's not updated yet, but when it's updated, of projects that we will want to do and where our existing estimate is.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
And as a reminder, on January 28th, we'll be discussing the transportation master plan, so that might be a good time for talking about that future vision. Other questions? All right. Well, I will ask two that I didn't get to ask, because I was facilitating the discussion. One was just for the Redmond Central Connector Three, what's the projected end timeline for that?
We expect substantial completion in December of this year.
Great. Very exciting. Can't wait to cut the ribbon on that.
Everybody's very excited for that one, yes.
And then, just, well, one comment and then one other question is, I'm really, was excited to hear about the PPE management project. I think, especially just learning from our experience with COVID and being prepared in case we need that in the future, and also just, I think we're in a different world now. It's really great to be investing in that, so just wanted to commend those efforts. And then, the last one is, I did see 172nd on this list. Can you remind us where we're at in that project?
We're on hold because we're waiting through some processes right now, so we don't have any current update of the project quite yet.
Okay. So we're still waiting on kind of what we might see as a timeline around that area?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Well, with that, I will just say thank you to you all and our amazing public work staff, just for all of this, this great work. Really excited to see all this infrastructure go into action and serve our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is council retreat planning. So I believe some of those who are joining us, I think the mayor has to hop out to a virtual meeting, but we'll be listening virtually, but has to hop out. But as a council, wanted to spend a little bit of time discussing, getting your input for our upcoming council retreat, which, as a reminder, will be on February 22nd, and we're going to have that from nine to four. So we'll try to get everyone out of there not too late. Council Vice President Forsyth and I have begun the planning for that, but did want to solicit your input. We are finalizing the facilitator. Unfortunately, our facilitator we used last year has retired from MRSC, so Tracy is no longer available to do our facilitation this year. But we do have some other potentials, and we're going to be interviewing a potential facilitator who used to work for City of Kirkland, and I think we'll bring some good ideas if we're able to work with her this, later this week. So I'll be sending out information on our facilitator as soon as we nail that down. But did want to just open it up for us to have a discussion, to share, I can share a little bit about what we were thinking in terms of goals and structure for the retreat, and then wanted to gather all of your input. And apologies in advance, I probably should have sent out some discussion questions for you to think on, but whatever kind of comes to mind now, and then if you have more thoughts after this, you can always send us a message or bring it up in the next council talk time before the retreat. But I'll just share a couple of things and then open it up for questions. So first, was going to share, so in terms of goals for the retreat, what we were thinking about is that the last year, a lot of different items have come up that I would say have kind of gone into our council parking lot, in terms of like processes and how we all work together, and ideas that we've, that have come as hopper items, that we've said, let's refer that to a retreat discussion. So I think bringing that list of those back and being able to work through those together and have some good conversations will be really key, and I'll go over those ones in a moment here. The other thing is, you know, in our council retreat, in the last several years, we've been doing an exercise to come up with policy priorities, so that at the front end of the year, we can hear what each other's kind of ideas and interests are, and then be able to prioritize. I think the last couple of years, we've done a great job at being able to kind of take our list from the previous year, add anything new, and then reprioritize. In the last year, for the new council members, or newer council members, you know, we did both budget and cap and kind of policy ideas. Since we're not in a budget year, we'll just do policy ideas in this retreat. But, and so I think we'll want to kind of review our existing priorities and then add to and reprioritize the list. And then, I think last goal that I would have for the retreat would be to spend time continuing to learn about each other and to connect more informally. I'll just run through really quickly, before we get into discussion, on both goals as well as kind of more specifics, just since I imagine this may come up in terms of goals, is what I have down for the council parking lot. So what I have so far of items that I think have come up, and I may be missing some, is reviewing the hopper process and kind of refining that, saying, seeing how it's been going since we did some improvements on that, discussing more about the role of the ombuds and what we want that to look like going forward, talking about a way for every council member to have a defined leadership role, which had come up as part of a hopper item, and really reviewing that again. Looking at the legislative coordinator role, now that DEDRA is a full, is going to be a full-time position supporting the council, what does that look like? And how do we better use this role to support council needs and what council, and to help council members? And then last is, since we will also have additional communications capacity, you know, what are some of the things that we might potentially want to do around maybe a newsletter or other communications, as well as we've talked in the past about potentially dividing up and working together on, you know, going to events or being out in community, so having some more of those discussions. So those are what I had for a parking lot. And we'll come back to that. I just wanted to kind of do that as an overview, but I'll start first with goals for the retreat, and wanted to ask everyone, so I'll ask two. As, one, what other, what goals do you have for the retreat? Are there any others in addition to those that I listed, and so that we can make sure that we divide it up in a way that's useful? And then, secondly, in terms of this council parking lot list, which I see as kind of the first big half of the retreat, at least, is there anything missing? Oh, those are your discussion questions. I'll open it up. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I'd be curious how the subcommittees worked out last year, and just an update on whether everything was successful and that kind of stuff.
That is a good call. I forgot that off the list, but that one has been raised, so great, great call. Councilmember Salahuddin?
Yeah, well, one opportunity that I had raised was a potential youth board or junior council, and I think that would be interesting to explore, along with, one of the, I think, most fun events that we've had in recent time, at least in City Hall, was the Redmond 2050 Celebration, which brought together community organizations and actually interfacing with all of the voices that had been a part of this. So what opportunities we can have to engage with more of these community-based organizations as a council? And then also, as a follow-up to that, you know, a recap of how the council conversations have gone. I think that will be good to gauge, you know, what best practices we've taken from those, has it been valuable, and seeing what can be ahead, what can go ahead.
Great. Yeah, and that'll be great also, because we'll have done two different formats by then with our upcoming town hall format that's coming up later this month. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you. I also had the evaluation of subcommittees. I think that there's maybe a lingering discussion on any of the committees that need to continue to stand in place or others that can sunset. I know I personally have a short-term, limited-duration subcommittee idea I would, I'd like to bring to the table. Maybe that can be part of that evaluation. I really like the parking lot as it's currently defined. I also think that in our budgeting process, I kept some notes regarding some of the major bodies of work that we left ourselves, and maybe the retreat is not sufficient enough time to tackle those projects, but maybe to get clarity on when they could be scheduled or further discussed. So some of those include reviewing the budget outcomes that we use in budgeting by priorities, the deeper dive on the fiscal policies, the guidance for the Housing Disability Fund, and then the Community Events Innovation Fund. There's some determination to do there, too. So those are just some of the, like, bigger bodies of work we left ourselves, and I'd be curious, coming out of the retreat, to know when we might be able to work with our committee chairs to get those things scheduled in a timely manner.
Thank you. I do know the housing one is going, is already slated for several study sessions in the upcoming months, and I believe Mayor Bernie is working on some initial kind of proposals to guide some of those discussions. So that one, I think, is on there, but I appreciate you bringing up some of those budget follow-ups, and we can identify if it works to put those in retreat, or whether we need to get those just scheduled out in committee and study session as well. Thanks for flagging those. Other comments, goals, ideas? Councilmember Fields?
I certainly agree with Councilmember Stewart on scheduling. I think we should go beyond maybe scheduling. I think we should have clear schedules on those things from the budget, as discussed. In addition, or part of that, I would like to see us establish in a little bit, channeling Councilmember Anderson here from past years, two or three high-priority goals that we identify, and if we don't get them done in 2025, we should be ashamed of ourselves.
Sounds good. I think that's a part of, that's good feedback for our prioritization, I think, of saying, what are our top top, which I feel like we're always kind of reaching this where we come up with our list and then to say, but what are we really going to do? So I think that's really great, great point. Thank you. And I'll stop editorializing between each one. Councilmember Anderson?
I think one, I heard this a little bit earlier in the committee meeting this afternoon, and I apologize for not being present, but the conversation around DEI work, I don't recall that being a big part of, and it may be because our facilitator was different this last year, but I'd be curious what our plans are for DEI in this year. I know we're going to have a facilitator separate from that, so just, that was an open question that I left the afternoon meeting with. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And as a reminder, we did do, as, for our council retreat, we did do a whole session with Anita last year on that, on that plan, going through it. So, but I do also look forward to us having that come back and continuing that work, and I think being able to discuss it in our retreat, and what's our vision for that, so we can communicate it to Anita would be great. Other comments, ideas? Councilmember Salahuddin?
I think, just one more thing on when the windstorm happened, I think as a council, I didn't feel like we had the, maybe it's, like, opportunity is not the right word, but the input or feedback, or even vice versa, of being able to have council's response and have a good response that we could put out. So maybe discussing something around, you know, when an emergency happens, that we can have the tools and resources that we need to communicate out to, to community.
Councilmember Anderson?
I wanted to refine what I was saying. So if there are policy goals specific to DEI that we can take care of before, I think it's the next election cycle, essentially, right? I think that would be helpful if they are even small. For example, the two policy proposals in the personnel manual that I had proposed, but, well, that would be in alignment with our existing goals, but if some of those small things can be outlined, that'd be good. Thanks.
Got it. Thank you. Council Vice President Forsyth?
I was just going to add on to the windstorm conversation, that that is a conversation that I believe, I believe Council President was there as well, that we had with the mayor, was that this was my second big emergency since being on council, and we still didn't necessarily know what our role was. So the conversation of role clarification, role definition, how council can help, has been happening, but I absolutely think that we should have a bigger conversation as well, potentially at the retreat, as to what ideas that we have, that we would want to see ways for us to be able to help the community.
Thank you. Yeah, and I know in that conversation, we even talked about being able to do, maybe as a council, like a tabletop exercise, or some of the other things that our staff are doing, but also to make sure that we do exercises where us as leaders, we can also do that to practice what our role would be in different types of emergencies. So we can discuss that at the retreat, too, of like, what would be the things that we also are interested in doing, or are able to do, so that way, as council leadership, we can go and advocate to get those experiences planned for council as well, and that type of preparation.
Other comments, ideas? Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, one more, but before we get to that, I want to also echo Councilmember Forsyth, Councilmember Salahuddin. There's been, that, our, we have a responsibility to the people who elected us to be informed during emergencies. We, it is a part of our job to secure the communications, secure and help secure the safety. It doesn't mean we run out there with fire uniforms or police uniforms, but we can be a key part of the communication. So whatever it takes for to get on the same page with the mayor's office, I think, is essential. That's, that was not the issue. The other is also a little bit charged. I mentioned during the budget process that we can expect a new federal government with completely different priorities than what we're used to over, over a number of years. And that may impact us. And that may impact us much more directly than we can imagine. And I think that we should have some way to understand and monitor those impacts and how they're impacting the, the health and the financial security of our community and be prepared to mitigate or take steps to fill in where we can.
Thank you, Councilmember Fields. I also, when we get into our policy ideas, have a couple of ideas along those lines as I do think as a city, we want to be prepared to make sure that we can support our community and protect the values that we care about during the upcoming time. Any other comments? Councilmember Salahuddin?
Sorry, I keep jumping in. The last year where we were working on, and I know the team has been working hard to get this scheduled, but meetings with the school boards, I think would love to, would love to track back on that.
Yeah, and actually, we do have one scheduled. I was going to share this in talk time, but since you brought it up, I just wanted to, you should have gotten an invite from Deidra, that we have one scheduled with the Lake Washington School Board on March 3rd from 5:00 to 6:30. We'll be going to their space to do it. And hopefully we'll get one on, on the calendar soon with the Bellevue School Board. I am in touch with them. So, but I think just that discussion, I think even about how we engage with school district and all of that, I think is, is a great topic that I will note for, for our council, because I think there's been other questions and ideas that have come up around how do we support our students and families during the retreat? Okay, great. And in terms of any other goals, so what we were thinking about was to spend a good chunk of the day, probably it sounds like a lot of it, on all these different topics and, and to kind of move through them because we just have a lot of discussions to have and have our facilitator guide us through in addition to doing that kind of brainstorm and prioritization. Are there any other things that people want to do in terms of, we might do maybe one fun exercise just as an icebreaker, but otherwise probably just get down to the meat of good discussions all day and have some tasty things for lunch? Councilmember Anderson?
We'd be able to go mini golfing.
I actually, I will ask the question because in the past, we planned at the end of the retreat, kind of a fun activity. I think two years ago, we, we planned like a game night thing after the retreat, and it seemed like there was a lukewarm response to that. But I will ask the council, would you be interested if we planned like the evening after that, is everyone going to be exhausted and be like, we're good, and at four o'clock, go? Or would we want to, to plan some sort of fun thing to do? Councilmember Noava Kamina?
Thank you. Actually, I'd like to suggest that we do something at the beginning of the meeting that kind of brings us together and gets us on the same page as a team rather than at the end, because I have that concern that at the end, we're just going to be exhausted and be ready to, to leave each other's presence.
Great. I see, I'll go Council Vice President Forsyth. I see you online, Councilmember Stewart. We'll get you next.
Thank you. I love the idea of doing something first. I think that's great. Also, that evening, the Redmond High School is having their big swing jazz band fundraiser, and I'm planning to attend to that, so.
Sounds like a lot of fun. Councilmember Stewart?
I'll just chime in on this, on this specific question. I think similar to two years ago, we are actually as a council, I'm going to be spending a great deal of the week prior together in Olympia. And so I know by the end of Saturday, I personally, like my family, will be ready to see me again. So I love the idea of a morning energizer of sorts. I think that that's great. You asked another question. Oh, I wanted to just, and this answer can come later from council leadership, but it'd be super helpful if there are any, like, for example, updates to the hopper process proposal or the ombud role proposal, if there's any documents that can be pre-read to ensure that we're able to use our time super wisely and, and prepare ourselves for the day, I certainly welcome those opportunities.
Thank you. That's great. Yeah, and I know we were, you know, we were working on both of those documents. And actually, I think Deidra just came up with a new draft of the hopper process, a refined draft that I can, that I'll send out. But yeah, we can send out the most kind of current drafts of both the ombuds document and the guidance or in the, the hopper document. So, so that way we can have some things to chew on as, as we get into this. So thank you all for this great brainstorm, and you gave us a lot to think about, and we'll come back to you with any more details. But otherwise, plan to be ready for a fun day. As Councilmember Stewart implied, the week before, we'll have AWC City Action Days that many of us will be going to in Olympia. So it will be a great time of council bonding during that week and look forward to spending that time with you. If there are no other comments, we'll move on to the final item on our agenda, which is council talk time. And I'll just follow up on, on these kind of scheduling discussions with a couple of reminders. January 23rd, that's Thursday of next week, at 5:30, we, we have our Council Conversations Town Hall format. And the mayor will be the one fielding the questions, and then we'll all be on the stage answering them. So, so that's going to be, I think, an exciting event, and when we'll see how we feel about that versus the other way that we did council conversations. But look forward to the whole council being there. We have a, we have noticed that as a public meeting, so a special meeting, so there's no kind of issues around like quorum or anything like that. We also, on February 1st, we'll cut the ribbon on our new electric fire engine, and that's at 1:00 PM. So just a reminder, because I think in one email, I sent out a different time. And then, yeah, we do have our legislative dinner, AWC City Action Days, and then the council retreat all from like the 18th to the 22nd of February. So get ready for that. And then March 3rd with the school board. And then for those who are going, we have the NLC conference coming up. So those are just some dates that are going to be coming up for us. And I think those who are going to the National League of Cities Conference in DC have already registered, but if anyone is, is still interested, just wanted to highlight that. I sent this in email, but I wanted to clarify again that just because of like how, because I can check in as council president on the council budget with the staff, when we typically budget assuming that people are going to be going to SCA and AWC events, so you don't necessarily have to get like an approval on those. But if you're going to go to any other types of conferences that will spend out some of the council budget, just send the request to me. I can send the approval to the staff and we can move that along. So just to explain why you want to go to any sort of event. So if you have something that you want to do, then just send that along and we can get that processed. You will see if you're going to something like AWC, that if you're going to travel overnight, you have to fill out a form, and Deidra will help you to process that. So just wanted to go over that briefly. And I'll open it up to any other items for council talk time. Actually, sorry, wanted to note that I heard from Councilmember Anderson earlier this evening that she would prefer to combine the hopper item that was on the agenda for tonight with another hopper item. And so we'll see those combined into one on the 28th. Is that correct, Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, ma'am. And there was an updated version that also got sent that did not get published with the agenda. So hopefully, thank you, Deidra, for sending that out, but that will be, they're both updates to the personnel manual, so that'll just come together in two weeks. Thank you.
Great. And I will, I'll work with, with you and Deidra to make sure that we get kind of the right thing for the packet for that. So we won't be doing that hopper item tonight, so that, we'll move on to any other items for council talk time. Seeing none, if there's nothing for good of the order, that brings us to the end of our agenda. This meeting is adjourned.